William Funtager.
Present.
Bill Givens.
Here.
Jim Brown here, and an attorney.
Here.
Mitch Ness.
Present.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now have approval of every 90 session and regular meeting minutes.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a reminder that we have people online today, and these meetings are recorded. So if you participate in the meeting, you're giving your permission to also. Next, committee of chair.
Madam President, I don't know if everybody else is having the same problems, but I can't hear, I guess I can't see anybody. So this is Jim Clevenger. I don't know if anybody else is experiencing the same problems or not.
Okay, hold on for a second here. Can you hear me now, Jim?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Excellent, okay. Thanks, Karen. We're starting with the third reading of ordinance 2021-002, amending the stormwater utility rates. Counsel, there's no further discussion or comments on our motion.
I think your motion will be passed, ordinance 2021-002, third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have on agenda for the evening. You guys recall we opened bids at the last meeting. Bob, are you on the call?
I am indeed.
Great. I know you were going to evaluate both these, and I'm assuming that you've done that and are recommending the lower bid with CCMG.
The lower bid was from E and B paving for $247,475.25. I'd like to have a motion to approve E and B paving for that, for this year's paving.
Okay.
Oh, move. Megan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda, we have visitor presentation. Matt, are you prepared to start that?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, hello, everybody. My name's Matt Keedy, and I'm the executive director of the Culver Lake Maxon Cucky Visitor Center. The presentation, hopefully you all received a copy of it. I'm not going to stop and go through every slide, but it was a presentation that was given to the CRC last week. And we wanted to, or I wanted to just go through and show some of the highlights as you've been so kind to include us in the budget again for this year. And we greatly appreciate your past and future support. So Karen, if you could move forward to the next slide. Our mission statement for the Visitor Center is to increase and strengthen tourism to support our local businesses and economy. So that's what drives our decisions. Next, please. And we're really proud. I just came into the, into the position last August. But even with everything that's gone on last year and is kind of continuing on with a little bit of uncertainty this year. Last year, we had over 456 volunteer hours or hours donated in kind. And our board consists of community members that have over 202 years of experience either living, working, or being a part of the Culver community. So I think there's a lot of great background that goes into our, into our decision making and the things that we are trying to do. You have a, if you have a copy, you can look over the board of directors and what they have to offer and their community involvement. And then if you could continue to move forward, Karen, we're going to skip ahead to, we're going to skip ahead to slide 11.
Yeah, if someone's on the phone or in their car on the phone, please put yourself on mute. We were getting some bad feedback there for a minute. I think somebody on the phone. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay. It's a slide 11.
No, I don't have the numbers to this slide.
Okay.
Excellent.
Yep, this one, this one right here. So just a quick overview. I think one thing that we're very lucky for a community like Culver and our size is the number of actual events that go on each year. And of course, some of those events, unfortunately, we're not allowed to take place last year, but we're hoping as many of them as possible will take place this year. And so one of the biggest components of what we do at the Visitors Center is to, you know, figure out the best ways to promote. And that includes both online promotions, whether it's through our website or Facebook page. But it also includes, includes, you know, using the Culver Citizen or the Pilot News, Lakes Magazine, or advertising during sporting events when our teams are doing well and moving towards the playoffs or whatever. So we try and reach a diverse group of audience. We know that not everybody uses Facebook or social media. And so we try and have a well brown, a well-rounded grouping of markets through which we share our information. On the next slide, you can see some of the, or an example of what we've done in Lakes Magazine for this coming month. When we do advertising with them, we typically will buy, purchase a large ad and then allow local businesses the opportunity to co-op at a lower rate for everyone involved. And then on the next few slides, you'll see some examples of us advertising in Lakes Magazine. And here you can see that's really paid off because in turn Lakes Magazine has given Culver wonderful representation. These are all from 2020. There were at least nine major articles, including the cover article on the parking shop, as well as other smaller mentions. And so we have a good relationship with them, and that's definitely a cornerstone of our branding and marketing campaign. If you could move forward to the next couple of slides, or just some more examples of some of the, some of the advertising that's gone into the magazine. Last year, we did do a bit of a pivot to find, to make Culver home when we were realizing that there were more and more seasonal residents here for longer periods of time and, and that more people were able to work from home for obvious reasons. And so it's, it's been a, it's been a good source to do that. And then also with our events like the Holiday Hop and just recently with Winter Fest, we've definitely made those the focus point of our advertisements in the Lakes Magazine. Okay, if you can move ahead, please. You can, if you could just go through, I think it's like the next eight slides. We'll kind of skim over those. Oh, actually, stop here. So one of the biggest things that we've just completed, and hopefully you all have a copy of in front of you, is we just, in the last couple of days, received the new Culver maps and brochures. And we've spent a lot of time updating it and getting it, getting it put together. And we're very pleased with it. And they'll be coming into retail establishments soon. And we're just coming up with a distribution list right now. And we're also going to be using a program that is free through Visit Indiana, the Indiana Tourism Board, to have these available at the, if you've ever stopped at a rest stop or an overpass or someplace where they have the brochure racks. We've allocated 1,100 of these, which is the minimum for their distribution plan, to be stationed around Northern Indiana where they have their racks. So we really spent a lot of time looking at the cover photo. We wanted it to be something that if somebody knew nothing about Culver, that they would, they would see that sitting next to other brochures on the rack, and they would say, ooh, that looks very pleasant, a great place to spend some time. And hopefully they pick it up and read a little bit more about our community. Okay? You can move forward. Yep, keep going. So some of these, keep going. Some of these are just examples with some metrics that we used for the presentation to the CRC. So Visit Indiana is also another great source. And they had a program last year called Hoosier Hospitality, which we encourage local businesses to become a part of that basically if a business took a pledge for following certain guidelines for COVID safety, then they would get free mentions and advertising on the Hoosier Hospitality website and the Visit Indiana website. And they could also up their presence if they offered any type of discounts or brochure. Consumers on the flip side also take the pledge that when they're inside a restaurant or an establishment, that they would abide by safety rules. And in turn, businesses could offer discounts that people could receive on their apps if they're in a particular area. So it's a great program. It's still ongoing. I would encourage anybody that's not signed into it. If you want to get signed into it, it's a great source of free advertising. Moving forward, please. So some of the things that we did in 2020, we had the new mural go up at the fire station, the new map, which you have. We launched the Culver Home Campaign. And I worked last fall with various organizations in town for the Holiday Hop and the Mutt Strut. And then just recently with the Chamber for the promotion of Winter Fest. All were very successful. The feedback that we received is although the numbers weren't at last year's level, they were close enough for the, for the merchants to be quite happy. And it was better than what they were expecting. So we'll take that as a success. Continuing on, please. These, obviously, the murals. You can keep going. And keep going. These next few slides are going to be some of the metrics and takeaways from the year. I'm not going to go through all of them now, and you should all have a copy of them. But as I said, we've been promoting Culver not only as a place to visit, a great place for staycation, vacation, but we've also been working with Visit Indiana. And they've done a nice job with a couple promotions of Culver and Lake Maxon Cucky. They had a huge statewide contest that went on for a couple of months to vote for the best lake in Indiana. And we came in at number three after Lake Michigan and Lake Wawa Sea. And we got a lot of free advertising out of that. And then they also did a recent article on mom vacations. And Culver got a lot of coverage in that. And the current issue of their magazine for this year is about the best Airbnbs and places to stay. And we have several of our local VRBO and Airbnbs listed in the magazine this month for Visit Indiana. And that's distributed across five states and available wherever Visit Indiana has their brochures up as well as online. So we're always happy to see that promotion and getting Culver in, in front of people's eyes. So moving ahead. So there are a lot of positive signs, especially as the vaccines become available, that there's pent-up demand, and people are definitely looking forward to traveling and getting outside. And that gives us some high hopes for this summer, moving forward. Again, I have a few metrics here, including the Airbnb tax collection for Marshall County Tourism. And then, whoops. Something happened. But pretty much, we just wanted to kind of go through with what we've been doing. And again, thank you for your continued support. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Karen, can you hear me?
I think he's turned out. Matt, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. I was just saying that, you know, we used to receive some funding for Marshall County Tourism.
I can't hear you.
I'll just keep. I mean, technical issues.
You want to move this one over there, Karen?
All right, great. That one's staying, who knows? Yeah, I was talking about Marshall County Tourism and how they funded us in past years. And I know they cut up, cut out of the funding. Have you guys had any recent conversations with Marshall County Tourism about funding?
I know that there have been discussions. Jonathan and Jenny had both had discussions with them. And I, I, I think my understanding from their feedback from that is that they're coming around to the idea that there needs to be some kind of share in that. But nothing firm has been decided as of yet.
I just wondered if they had reached out at all as an organization to Visitor Centers since the last conversations. But that, that tells me what I need to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, I mean, I can tell you that I'm, I talked to Cory probably once a week or so on various other things. But as far, as far as the funding, Jonathan and Jenny were, had talked to them about it. And to be quite honest, we probably need to circle back now and find out, you know, where that stands.
Yeah, I was definitely involved in this conversation. And I probably need to also talk with the county. We may have to do a similar sort of presentation with the county or try to work it out with the county tourism. But we'll follow up with you on that. I, I know Jonathan and I were thinking that this year would be different, but I don't know where their budget stands after a year of COVID. So we'll dig into that further.
And sorry, Jenny, I don't have a camera.
Oh, that's okay.
Sorry. I'm just going for voice, and I don't know.
So, Kitty, this is, this is Tracy Fox. And I just want to say Matt's right. We haven't had any formal discussion. I too am in touch with Cory on this and that. We did receive a $1,000 grant from them over 2020. And that's what was used to fund the purchase of the, or the printing, right, Matt? Of the maps that you guys hopefully have access to.
Okay, thanks, Tracy. Any other questions, counsel, or? Okay. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. I greatly appreciate the time.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have intergovernmental agreement with.
Hello?
Did you all put yourself on mute if you're not?
This is Jim Clevenger. I think it's my turn to talk about the intergovernmental agreement. I hope Karen shared a copy of it with you. If not, it seems like I shared a copy with everybody. The Culver, or the county has gone ahead and approved the intergovernmental agreement whereby we're going to share 50/50 mark 80 of Barnes &amp; Thornburg's fee concerning the bankruptcy filing of Mr. Van Hawk in the 415 Lakeshore Drive property. The design is, is that Culver would sort of be the lead client, if you will. Mr. 80 indicates that Barnes &amp; Thornburg has a discounted fee arrangement, engagement with the town through Phil Fasenda and the Culver redevelopment commission. So that's going to be the hourly basis for his continuing on. And in fact, he has done some work on it. Just a quick update on that before, while you consider this intergovernmental agreement. He's been in contact with the attorney for First Federal, who was doing the sheriff's sale on the 614 College Avenue property, same sheriff's sale date. They've coordinated their efforts and have very similar motions prepared to lift the stay and the bankruptcy so we can go forward with the sheriff's sale. They've got a meeting planned, I think, the end of this week. And their, their goal at this point is to file that motion the first of March. So then he's moving forward on behalf of the town of Culver, and I guess to some extent, Marshall County. I would ask the council to consider approval of this intergovernmental agreement whereby the two entities will share fees. My plan, I guess, for organization purposes is Culver would be responsible for paying Barnes &amp; Thornburg the fee under their engagement. And then Karen will work with Julie in the auditor's office so that the county will reimburse the town for half of those fees.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Any questions, counsel?
Thank you for working out the split.
Was that Givens that was talking, by the way?
It was.
I, I don't know whether he had any background arm twisting going on or whether that was necessary. But if it was going to be a problem, I was prepared to call on him for some help, just so you know.
Motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jim.
Well, thank you. And I'll continue to report on progress.
All right. Next, we have regional stellar plan update. I don't have updates for all of you, but I know Bob's been working on the message board project. And Amber, of course, updated us last time on the park project. Bob, do you have any further updates on the message board project?
I don't have anything to update on that project. The State Road 10 and Jefferson project, those two will have a pre-construction meeting sometime in the first or second week of March.
Okay. Well, that fits nicely with our stellar plan update since that's a stellar plan project. The pre-construction in March.
Yep, and I'm trying to get some quotes for a rain garden in front of parking shop so we can deal with the water runoff when that sidewalk gets installed. So I'll keep you posted on that.
Okay. Is Shannon coming up for the pre-construction meeting?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay. I just wondered. He usually.
I can ask that question.
Okay. Any other stellar plan update from anyone on stellar projects? I think Bob just pretty much covered the gamut of them.
If, if you want me to do my signature request, I can do that now because it kind of is, it's the Trail Lake Fest, or Lake Max Trail thing, too.
Do, that's what, yeah, go for it, Bob.
I received an email from NDOT. Jonathan requested some additional funds for right-of-way acquisition on South Main and Davis Street. And in doing that, it takes a contract modification, and they need a signator to bind the town with the, or buying the contract with NDOT to adjust that. I think it's $6,200 or something. It's increasing. So we need to, I'd be more than happy to do it if you make a motion that I can modify that contract with NDOT.
So NDOT is going to give the funds to the project, but we have to have some. So.
It requires a signature to modify that contract.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then for Lake Max Phase 3, Bob, just FYI, the council's been informed of past meetings with Culver academies. They do want to consider the alternative route instead of the original Academy Road and State Road 10 route. We checked into whether or not a new survey in that preliminary engineering phase could come out of construction from NDOT. NDOT said, oh, that's not possible. We could try to request additional funds where you basically go, oh, our projects get to cost more than the grant you gave us. But that requires central office approval. And it's probably not likely. You know, they're already giving you a grant. They're not going to go, here's an extra $50,000 because we feel like it. So NDOT suggested that we let Culver know that if we change the route, that upfront costs would have to come out of local dollars versus grant dollars. So I've let them know. That was very recently that NDOT got back to me. So it's very recent to them as well. And I'll let you guys know when they're back. So Bob, I'll keep you in the loop on that, too, in case Marcia reaches out to you at all.
Perfect, please do.
Okay.
Jenny, what did we talk about?
Um, well, on the, on the original route, it came out to about $60,000 between their grant dollars and our dollars because we make that 20% match. On this particular route, Mike is sort of predicting about the same. Maybe it'll be a little less on the preliminary engineering side because it's a little easier of a route to handle than the State Road 10 Academy Road one. So probably the same ballpark, though, Bill, between 50 and 60 is our guess.
They didn't split. They didn't like our original.
Right.
So we came back with an alternative. It cost different money. They have their approach split.
Well, and there is a, that, that might be an ideal solution because we do need right-of-way from them to do that alternative route. And typically, that involves easement. Sometimes you purchase that. So they have, there's value to their easement. But certainly, we wouldn't even be considering that route if we were going the original route. So they know the circumstance and that there's a cost to it. And because we don't know that exact cost at this point, I don't think it's something for us to vote on yet. We need to see if they're willing to make, pay for that upfront work and go from there. So right now, I've communicated to them what NDOT said. NDOT got back to me last Friday, so I let Doug know over the weekend, and he's, he probably got that Monday. So I'm sure he's got to take a few to figure that out, but we'll keep everyone in the loop, and we ideally, NDOT would like to know which route we're proceeding with in the next couple of weeks, because we're behind schedule at this point. Not on paper, just that they were more interested in us going that route. And the, the other side of that, though, was they knew there would be upfront costs to that. They wanted to see if NDOT was willing to pull that from construction. I think Mike and Tour Group felt like it would be less expensive construction-wise to go that route because there's some shared road space there, and it's not nearly as difficult a project. But that doesn't mean NDOT will pay for it necessarily. NDOT, it depends kind of usually on the calendar year and their fiscal year and where things fall. Sometimes they will do that, but kind of unusual when they do do it. It usually means the timing is just right for them fiscally. So, but they have to stick to their budgets, and, you know, very rarely are they going to be under budget on these projects. So if we went to and said, can we please have an extra $60,000 paid for this upfront work? That would mean someone else's grant came way under budget. You guys know that doesn't happen very often. So that's all the updates I had for seller. Bob, did you have anything further?
No, that's all I have.
Alrighty. So we'll go past Town Manager's Report and go to Department Head Report, starting with Jeff with EMS is here. Hi, Jeff.
Hi.
Can I go ahead up next to the speaker? I'll put on my mask so people can hear. Thank you, Jeff.
Culver 1 is out of service at the moment. Here is some engine troubles, stuff that wears right now, and I passed on to Bill and a couple others. Passing along more information as to cost and any other issues that come along with it. Could be a little bit of extensive, but it will be something that we're going to Other than that, everything else is ongoing, on track. Any questions from the council?
Any positive reaction to the
Yes, yes, actually, just got on another paramedic recently, finished up the foreign tuition pay. And have another EMT in the works, another paramedic in the works as well. The employees are, they, they do appreciate the traditional holiday pay that helped out very much last year here. So that, that helps things out. So it's all, all the moves that we made last year was a little positive move. Next council meeting, when we'll come to you with a decision on the hire of another full-time person. With a couple of setbacks that I had, I'll have a final determination this week, beginning next week, and I'll come to you for the first one next month.
Great, thank you, Jeff.
It was kind enough this afternoon to, more walking through this new blockwork group. And I was personally very impressed with it. It deserves congratulations. I know it wasn't easy. But I think the end result of this is, after a period of time as a committee, we're going to know a lot more about EMS as far as the demographics and so forth of our community than we ever did. It's all through the effort of Jeff, and with that program, it does. Sometimes Jeff might want to go real short for it because it's, it's huge indeed. It's really impressive.
Awesome, you can put that together. Well, I appreciate that, and it part and part was a collaborative effort between all of us, so we get that. So I appreciate the kind words, and I look forward to getting this rolled out here.
Is it, is that software related to why Billings has gone up?
Um, no, Billings gone up for
It's tracking it down and hunting down the
No, not really. It's really combing in on demographic information that needs to be put into it. It's a little bit of a training process. And it's going to be a little bit with the software, it's actually going to enhance it even more because it's going to start being more clearly defined for ActuMed as well. So it doesn't blur the lines anymore for them. We have been working with them over the last month to fine tune areas that we need to be getting information and getting that information to the staff so they know what information. So it is a, it's an ever-changing field every year because worldwide, from most part, they set the standard for a lot of things. And so looking at all that information and making sure we are collecting it, making sure that we're doing things, making sure this thing is built out properly. Some of that was, and when I first started, was a lot of going back with a lot of other charts, looking at other things, and then working with ActuMed to remedy. So it's, it's not as simple as just checking a box and pushing it out and saying, well, there's, there's a process on our side just as much as ActuMed. So it is a, a very important step. And I, I talked about this last meeting, how Billings and necessary evil in a sense, you know. But it's a very important part of the piece here. And to do that, it just takes a lot of dedication, a lot of time to put in. You don't put much time into it, you're not going to get much back, and that's, that's the trade.
Just being due diligence with the staff, making sure they're doing that properly. Is, does ActuMed have a window of time where after a certain amount of time, you can't go to place name?
Yes, for Medicare, it's 365 days from the Medicaid, this month. Commercial insurance, they are finicky depending on the national commercial insurance. Typically, it falls within a group period. And if the insurer to allow them to process that bill within this following, there is a timeframe we have to, we have to get this information out. And so the way we have the other software, those time windows were getting hidden, where now it's more visible, it's more, it's more out in the open to where it's easier to track. There's more, there's more excellent.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we have fire. Terry, are you on the call?
Yep.
Hi, Terry.
Well, I just want to say I can't wait till we get back to a regular meeting because we don't have subtitles, and I'm getting to hear about every third word of everything that everybody's saying. So I'll make mine short and sweet, I hope. I just want you to know that we filed for a radio grant, it's a matching grant of $7,300, hopefully, keep your fingers crossed, for 16 air packs, which our budget is about $8,000, I believe, for that expenditure. Also, we filed for a grant with the county, and we've done this before, and neither one of these grants are going to cost us any money unless, of course, we get it to file for them. Also, we're working with the same as EMS on the, I am responding for the radios. Sometimes addressing things don't work too good when we go out of county and things like that. And this app is, I believe they're trying to get 300 bucks out of us or something for it, and we're on a trial basis trying to make it work. Not 100% sure right now. We've got some niches that we're trying to work out. And also, I want to thank Bob and his crew for doing some water work at our station to keep the cost down. I think we kept a project that would probably cost about $3,000 to 500.
That's great.
That's, that's about all I really have to throw at the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Wayne, are you on the call today? Okay, thank you. Amber, are you on the call?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
So you all should have received, I know I let you guys know at the last meeting, our new facility rental rate, and you should have received that Excel spreadsheet of my suggested rental rates. And I just need approval for that unless anyone has any questions before we move forward about what I sent you.
I think my only question was really one for Jim and Karen. Do we need, have a public hearing on those rental rates?
Well, this is Jim Clevenger, and I guess I'll chime in. The rates look to me like they're going to be increased, and I don't know that you need one, but my recommendation is that you have one.
Okay. So Amber, what we would do is put this on the agenda for the next meeting, or no, Karen would advertise for a public hearing. So probably would be the second meeting in March, if you advertise so many days, et cetera. And basically, we would publish what those rates are going to be. People can come in and talk about it if they want at the public hearing. And then, once we've had a public hearing, the council can vote on those rates. So what we'll do is have Karen advertise, you can work with her on that. And if, if the second meeting in March doesn't work from a timing standpoint, we can do it at the first meeting. Did you catch all that, Amber?
I think so. So just work with Karen on the details about the public hearing, and I did not hear whether or not Karen confirmed it would be the second meeting in March, is that right?
Yeah, it's Karen's signaling that that would be right.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Amber. Bob, do you have anything further under utilities?
I just have one quick thing. It's an expensive, quick thing, but we had an alarm middle last week at the Madison Street Lift Station. And doing that repair, we found out that there's two stainless pipes that go down to our pumps that are rotted off at the bottom, and we need to replace them. There's four of them in this lift station, and I got a quote from Thomas Welding and Escavating for $5,229. I'd like to have approval to get that repaired.
Counsel? Do you have a question, Rich? So motion from Bill Giffens in a second, from Bill Clevenger, or vice versa, sorry, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, Bob.
Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Bob. Is anyone on the call reporting for the Plan Commission or the BZA? All right, so we'll move on to the redevelopment commission. Any report, Sally, from the redevelopment commission?
I'm the Mr. Mike. It was basically an organizational meeting, and we had we discussed Matt Keating's presentation a little bit. Other than that, we're looking forward to hopefully seeing you all well while we're at this next meeting. Yeah, and I think that's on the 19th. I was elect president. Thank you. Paul Benedict is vice president, and Yuri Herick is secretary.
Yes.
Can we go back one thing? I, I did attend the BZA meeting.
Sure.
They moved that over to this house.
Uh huh.
It was denied. Petition of the present was denied. So you did comment that they will start construction this week. I don't know where
Okay. Okay, thank you, Bill. Bill was just reporting about the BZA meeting. For those online that did not hear that, he just gave us a summary of a house that went before the BZA and the petition was denied. So anybody from the Tree Commission wanting to report this evening? If not, we'll move on to the Clerk's Report.
So I have five claims for you to approve that are over $2,000. Miller Insurance Group for $19,294, and that's for the workman's comp policy renewal. South Shore Managed IT, that's $3,224 for IT services. It's a new contract, which we'll discuss in a moment. Seller Services, $4,561.53 for snow removal over the last couple of months. Midwestern Engineers, $2,000, and that was the remainder of their contract for engineering for the community costing grant. And then finally, Country Auto Center, that was $9,015.01, and that's for repairs and maintenance for the street department.
All in favor?
Aye.
Karen, I think we need to talk a little bit about doing a better job on the
Okay.
Really do.
He doesn't do streets, he needs sidewalks?
Well, oh, we do the streets?
Yeah. Yeah, he does sidewalks.
Well, I think he, I think he can use them to just put them through on the sidewalk. And they'll, they'll pass the alley's India's
I think it stops against There's a certain area that they're doing it. Hey, Bob? Let me, I'll call the contract tomorrow and show it to you so that you have an idea of where that, that goes.
What's the question, Karen?
How far does the seller's snow removal contract go?
It goes from the CMD Building to, I believe it's Ringer's Cart. Just on the one side of the road. Downtown, it's both sides. Up through town, it's the north side, up to Ringer's Gulf Garden.
I think we can keep going that next block toward the old Ringer's Restaurant. It was potential, it was just the old auto building, the building that Grant owned, and I own, and then, those were the only commercials. We didn't go that way. Just up to the, the restaurant. Glad you asked, though.
Thank you. I'll try to make this quick. Can I have approval of the January financial reports?
All in favor?
Aye.
We would like to, I think, last meeting or two meetings ago, Jonathan talked about a plan to reopen Town Hall and move council meetings back to Town Hall so that Amber has space to use in the evenings. So I Amber has space to use in the evenings, um, so I, Karen made the suggestion that we start in March, all meetings move back to Town Hall, hopefully, we can have more normal setups and not this teardown, um, put back up, and maybe, um, our audio will be a little bit better, uh, for people, because I'm sure people are getting frustrated as I am. Um, with the county advisory, or, so also, opening up Town Hall to the public, we've remained closed through all of this, uh, since November, um, but right now, the county advisory level is at one, I believe, last I checked, um, and so I would propose also opening Town Hall to the public beginning March 1st, and just keeping an eye on the advisory levels, so if it does go back up to the orange zone, have, have it automatic, we'll close, close to the public, add an orange, if we continue at yellow or below, we'll just stay open, um, that way, it's not, we don't necessarily have to have a delay, um, of coming to the council, and also, we would just make, um, make that information available to the public via Facebook, Towne, Downey Lake, and to the media, um, just as we normally do, and then we would just continue to ask that those entering Town Hall to do, um, to do business, follow the state mask mandate as long as that lasts.
Is that, um, okay with the council? We...
You want to lodge it in?
Okay, motion made by Bill Giffens, seconded by Bill Clevenger, all in favor?
Is that a question?
Yes.
When you talked about opening the town hall, you was talking about opening office spaces, not the biggest, but for this, um, the, 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 the...
Correct, unless somebody has, um, like, tonight, I think Jamie had asked if she could come to the meeting, I told her yes, I mean, um, if people want to come to the meeting, if they could just let us know in advance, then we make sure that we, we keep the, uh, the numbers down, especially in that space, which is much smaller than this one, so, um, but we also want to give Amber the opportunity, the flexibility to use this space as it was intended.
I agree.
So, um, to, uh, hopefully, everybody online who's frustrated with the call tonight, um, I did put in a call to MediaCom, and they will be here on Thursday, if I could get council, though, to officially approve going, getting MediaCom for internet service at Town Hall, that would be appreciated.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, um, I do have a new contract with South Shore IT, there was a question this afternoon about change, making one change about being able to, um, end the contract without cause, uh, with a 30-day notice, I sent an email over to them to ask if that could be changed, um, I'll just bring it back to council the next time, I mean, they're considered, they're continuing to support us, um, so we'll just take care of that next meeting. Um, and then finally, my annual report is due on Monday, and it has not been the smoothest or smoothest report to complete, so I don't have it here tonight for your final approval, I could have a volunteer for council to come and just review the report for accuracy, and then, um, so I can go ahead and get it submitted on time, um, and then bring it to council on March 1st and just have a formal approval, um, then one nice thing about the report is it can be changed, you know, you can make, um, make changes after it's submitted, but, um, if I could have somebody, uh, kind enough to spend a little bit of time at Town Hall reviewing that, I, and this week.
Okay, great, thank you, Bill. You have a motion for matters, okay?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, you get to prove it at the next meeting, so I will, um, I will pass this back over to you.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, attorney's report?
Um, I don't have anything further, I'll plan on attending the executive session at the Town Hall on March 9th, as well as the regular meeting.
Great, thank you, Jim.
You bet.
Is anyone here for utility shut-off or ordinance violation? All right, we'll go on to citizen input, if you're online and you have citizen input, please unmute yourself.
Um, hi, this is Marty Ostervan, uh, can I have the floor for a moment or two to talk about the, um, innkeeper's tax and approaching the visitor center, or, I'm sorry, the, um, Tourism Bureau?
Sure, absolutely.
Uh, thanks, thanks, Jenny, so, um, uh, some of you, um, know this, but a couple of months ago, I joined the, uh, Visitor Center Board, um, the, um, the, the pay was just, um, too attractive to turn down, so, uh, so I, um, I signed up with them, and on the way out, Jonathan was kind enough to brief me with respect to the issue, um, one of the strategic claims we've got, uh, within the visitor's center in Main Street is to, uh, stabilize our funding, it's kind of been bumpy, and, uh, and, uh, you know, a, a reduction in funding from the tourism has been, you know, a reason for that, so we're looking at the innkeeper's tax, um, as, uh, you know, Jenny, it's a new tax on the Airbnbs and VRBOs, um, it's a separate, and, and separately identifiable stream of money that's now coming into the Marshall County Treasurer, and, uh, you know, some 80, 90% of the Airbnbs, VRBOs in the county are here in Culver, so, uh, we think we, you know, we've got a good solid claim, you know, to that, and, and we think that that money is more than sufficient, uh, to help, you know, stabilize our funding, so, I know you and Jonathan were working on that, um, I know that one of the options is to go to the county board, um, I know Jonathan and, um, and I think he said that Kevin, uh, uh, may have been involved in that as well, that, you know, there's some risk in going to the county, um, and that the, um, uh, the option is, um, not exhausted yet to work with the board at the, um, at the County Tourism Bureau, and so, we've been thinking about that, and, uh, we just, we're standing ready to, to help however we can in those discussions.
Yeah, one of the things that Jonathan had researched was whether there were other counties that had more than one tourism board, because the way, way the statute is written, uh, generally, your county sets up a separate board for tourism, and we, we did find a, a hybrid situation or two out there in some more unusual, um, situations where you had more than one sort of tourism activity or board within a county, uh, so we, we presented that to the Marshall County Tourism, um, they basically said, no, can't do that by statute, so, um, I think we probably should have Jim research that a bit, um, and see if there might be a possibility for us to see some of those dollars come back to Culver, um, because we are producing a majority of the tourism dollars in the county, um, Plymouth probably is the other major contributor to tourism dollars, because they have, they have hotels and, and, um, but you're right, Marty, about the Airbnb, uh, we did make Marshall County Tourism aware of that, um, but we were not successful in getting, uh, funding to come back to Culver, so Jim, we'll fill you in on that, but we probably would like to have, um, you, and if, if we need to, I know, because the county uses dollars, and then they move on to the tourism board, um, I don't know if there's something else we can work out there, but, uh, we definitely need to pursue a different angle, because I don't think we're going to see any more dollars come back to Culver than any of the I, I, County Tourism Board for that purpose, and there's, I believe, probably ordinance involved in that, Jim, and I don't know if the ordinance can be changed, or we can have separate tourism boards, um, we obviously invest a lot into tourism in Culver, because that's our economy essentially, a large part of our economy, uh, and the last, heads up. It was, uh, hanging out around, oh, okay. Anyway, so, any other citizen input on...
This is Rose Workman. Can, I can't, I can't hear you guys at all, I don't know if you can hear me or not.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. I am, just wanted to give Town Council a heads up, um, on Culver Lake Fest for 2021, um, we chose the dates of July 2nd, 3rd, and 4th this year, um, pretty much, we are collaborating with the Culver Chamber and their fireworks display, um, that was the reason for the change of date, um, I know after 37 years, it's kind of a big deal, but we're going to go for it and see how it goes, um, we will have a special event permit to you guys, hopefully, by the next meeting, um, just want to work out the logistics before we pass it off.
Okay, great, thank you for the heads up, look for the special permit for the next meeting.
Okey doke.
Any other citizen input online?
Jenny, this is Tracy, um, I just want to thank the, speaking of special event permits, I just want to thank the council for approving the farmer's market permit, you all should have received the thank you note that, um, Chad and Zinnia and I sent along with, gosh, I think a couple dozen vendors and nonprofits who were very grateful for your support of that, so we really appreciate that and look forward to, um, less snow, warmer weather, and seeing you all at the market, so thank you again.
Okay, thanks, Tracy, any other, uh, citizen input online? Citizen input in the room? Council issues, Sally? Council issues, Rich?
No.
Council issues, Bill Giffens?
Go ahead.
Council issues, Bill Clevenger? All right, um, anything else from you, Karen? Motion to adjourn to claims? All in favor?
Good evening, all.
Bye, Jim.